Thank you for attending tonight, Thursday, July 21st, 2022, our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next section is additions and changes to the agenda, and I believe we've got possibly two. One is your pleasure on the discussion of possibly canceling one of the August meetings. And then the other one would be the discussion on the Board of Ed request for a special appropriation. Is that correct, Andy?
Yeah, I would suggest on the number or the Board of Ed request for supplemental appropriation that that be added under New Business 9G.
Then I, anybody have any issues with that? Hearing none.
Well, wait a minute, Dan. What, what meeting would that be? I'm not going to be here for the first meeting in a week in August. It's Jessica's birthday, so I won't be able to attend that.
Right, and this was, you had, you had asked if y'all, if there was nothing pressing, would it make sense to cancel a meeting? Tiffany is fine with it. Peter, I believe, was fine with it. I don't have a life, so I'll be here anyway.
I do have a life, but I'm fine with it.
So I guess we could discuss that the third Thursday in August, then if we have agreement that if there's not anything pressing.
And this was, and this is what it is. Apparently, Board of Education has requested a special appropriation to reinstate the money that was cut. So we need to discuss it. It's a Board of Finance action, but we usually would do a recommendation that would go along with that request to the Board of Finance. Does that make any sense?
It does. Is there a, is there a joint meeting, or are we just going to discuss it at one of our regular meetings?
No, if I could jump in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just for clarification, the Selectment president tonight are Mark Ruberagio, Richmond and Dan Larson, Peter Casper and Tiffany are not with us tonight. For time sensitivity and per the Hebron Charter, we got a letter this week addressed to me, the Town Manager, from the Chairman and the whole Board of Ed requesting a supplemental appropriation. And the appropriation is actually looking for money to add to a preschool program. So per Charter, normally the Board of Selectmen approves and denies unless it's the local Board of Ed. So because it's the local Board of Ed, we forward it over to the Board of Finance, but we can send along with the Town Manager recommendations. So due to the sensitivity of the 30 days that they have to act and reply, the Board of Finance will have to set up a special Board of Finance meeting to do that. I received the letter. I sent it to the Town's Attorney for a preview and advice and comments back. So as soon as I get that, I will send that to the Board of Selectmen and to the Board of Finance. But if we're going to cancel the August meeting in the first week, we need to take it up today. So I would vote to add this to the agenda due to the time constraints.
Okay. I'm in favor of that, Dan. So it's whatever you and Gail think.
Okay, no, I, I have no issue with it either. Yep. Gail?
Oh, I have no issue with the Town Manager's recommendation concerning it is what we should be doing. It's sensible.
So that'll be item nine.
G?
G. And then, again, the cancellation of the meeting, I guess would be 9H to discuss that or whatever. Okay, so if there's no issues with that, we'll move forward. Our next section is our public comment section, and this is the section for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board. We request the comments. We limit it to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and their name in the chat box, and they will be recognized.
Mr. Kevin Tullamary has a public comment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager. My name's Kevin Tullamary, 110 Kinney Road, and you'll see in your minutes that I, you received a letter from me and my wife Jean this week regarding the proposed Public Works Development at 17 Kinney Road. And I wanted to make you aware of a document that I recently became aware of. And this is titled the CBD Update and Proposed Business Expansion Area. It's an Environmental Review Team report prepared by the Eastern Connecticut Environmental Review Team for the Conservation Commission and Economic Development Commission of Hebron in June of 2000. And there's a couple important sections in that document that I think you should be aware of as you move forward in considering the public works at 17 Kinney Road. These are public documents found on T T E R T dot org slash Hebron. On page eight, under Bedrock Hydrology, it discusses two fractures in the bedrock that passed through what they called at the time the proposed CBD expansion area that includes 17 Kinney Road. And on page nine, under the section Surficial Geology, the report states, quote, "A corollary to increased water supply, greater fracture density also suggests increased permeability and faster rates of groundwater dispersal, and also greater rates of dispersal of potential contaminants that may enter the groundwater system." So I don't know if you're aware of this document or the occurrence of these bedrock fractures at the location. I think that's important to recognize, and the conclusion on page nine, under Surficial Geology, offers a significant warning, quote, "Potential impact of development of an expanded business area involves accidental introduction of toxic substances into the hydrological systems, both surface and groundwater. Because much of the development will take place on upland slopes and flat areas, impact of serious accidents will likely be felt downslope, both in the natural surface drainage basins and in the bedrock groundwater aquifer." So I think placing a public works facility really causes a risk of contamination of that groundwater. And actually, in the Plan of Conservation and Development, Section A Sustainability, page 179, objectives number one specifically mentions the hazardous nature of the industrial public works operations, quote, "Proper precautions to protect wetland soils are essential due to high vehicular use and the nature of storage materials necessary to operate the department," end quote. So I think it needs to be recognized, and I hope you can find a copy of this CBD Update and Proposed Business Expansion Area Environmental Review Team Report in 2000. It was addressed to the Conservation Commission and the Economic Development Commission.
I will definitely look for that report, and again, we do take seriously all information. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comment? Hearing none. Our next will be our good to know and special recognition. And because we really don't have anything, I received something, and I think it's a special recognition. And it's a letter, so I'm going to read it. It says, "Hi, Dan. We wanted you and the Board to know that at this Friday's A H M Golf Tournament, we will be honoring Andy and Donna for what is called the Howard Dean Community Service Award for their years of support helping to bridge the partnership between Hebron, A H M, and the other towns. We just wanted to make sure that you and the other Hebron Board of Selectmen knew about this honor being given to Andy Tierney and Donna Lanza. We know that Andy and Donna are very humble people, and they may have never said anything. We will take photos and do a press release following the golf tournament, and from Joel Rosenberg." So thank you, Andy and Donna. Bet you didn't know that was coming, huh?
Nope, didn't know they reached out. We didn't, I don't think Donna and I said anything.
You did not. This came from Joel, and it was like, what a perfect time. Okay.
Congratulations, guys. Good. Glad you read that, Dan.
You too deserve it. Okay, Town Manager's report, or, oh, excuse me, appointments and resignations. And we actually have two appointments. So Andy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So under appointments and resignations, under item A, item, this is item six, A, Assessor Appointment. As I stated earlier, we sent out the resumes for this person. So at this point in time, the Town of Hebron recently conducted a recruitment interview process for the position of assessor, as Deb Gernhardt is retiring effective August 5th, 2022. The successful candidate in the Town Manager's recommendation is Tina Corvo. And then there's a proposed motion. I don't know, is Tina on here with us tonight, Donna?
Yes, she is.
She is here, Andy. She just turned on her camera.
Okay, so with that, I'll turn it back over to the Chairman, and he can conduct the meeting and ask Tina if she wants to say a little bit about herself.
I would love to be able to do that, and good day and welcome. So you want to just give a quick update of who you are and welcome to Hebron?
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Just making sure. So my name's Tina Corvo. I've been in the assessor's world for a little over four years now. I got, I've received my certification last year, so I am a Connecticut Certified Assessor, and I've been in municipalities for about eight years or so, working with different towns in different roles other than just the assessor position. Most of my time, I was in Pomfret, Connecticut Assessor's Office, you know, so a smaller town. I went to a bigger town, and now I'm looking forward to coming back to a smaller town like Hebron.
Well, thank you, and thank you for replying. Anybody have any questions of Tina?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a comment. I read your resume and your background, and I do like that you have a cross background. You've, by working in other departments besides the assessor's office, you see how everything fits together in our small towns. So again, I thank you for coming to Hebron.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, the motion is, yes, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome you too, Tina, and I hope you find a home here, and it's a place you can believe in and do a good job. So welcome. I'm glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, move the Hebron Board of Selectmen in accordance with the Town Charter, Chapter Eight, Section 803 A and B, approve the Town Manager's appointment of Tina Corvo as Town of Hebron Assessor effective July 25th, 2022. Any comment? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Ruber, aye.
Myself, Dan Larson, aye. Welcome. Thank you for coming to Hebron.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
So it's great. Thank you very, very much, and I'll see you. We'll all see you. So we'll stop in and say hi, introduce ourselves.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next is the Fire Marshal Appointment. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tina. Welcome aboard. Under Deputy Fire Marshal's Appointment, Item B, on item six, the Town of Hebron recently conducted a recruitment interview process for the position of part-time Deputy Fire Marshal. The successful candidate in Town Manager's recommendation is John Spalding. I don't think John here is with us tonight. He was going to be on vacation, and he thought he might have trouble with internet access. So I don't, I didn't see him when I looked at the list, but we do have a proposed motion. And I talked to Randy, who's our full-time fire marshal, and Randy knows him. We interviewed him. John comes with a pretty good resume, which I've also sent out to all the Selectmen today. And Danny, I don't know if you've talked to him or you've seen the resume, but I think we're in good hands.
I was gonna say, I talked with Randy. I did not see the resume, but talking with Randy, I think he's going to be a great fit, and I think, I think it's going to be a plus for the town. So I'll read the motion, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the Town Manager's appointment of John Spalding as the Town of Hebron Deputy Fire Marshal effective August 1st, 2022. Since he's not here, we can't ask any questions of him. But without further ado, those in favor signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
I'm sorry to see you go, Dan, but we need a new Fire Marshal, so I guess I have to say aye also.
And myself, aye. Yep. I, I agree, but at the same time, for the good of the town, I think this is the right thing to do. So, you know, get some new blood in there, younger blood, because mine's getting a little old. Okay, next would be our correspondence. Andy?
Okay, I'll jump right into the recent activities of the Town Manager, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
All right. So even though it's summer, we're very busy. So one of the, one of the biggest things we're working on, and I think there's going to be some mention of it in the River East, is the Wall Street Sidewalk Project. We've been heavily involved in that. So for an update, that was originally hoping to get installed with the Ram Campus Improvements, and it was bid in that project and designed in that project. And the contractor that did the work was BB Construction, but there was not enough money in that project to finish the sidewalk all the way up to Wall Street. So at that time, BB had bid that job if they could do it in concert with the Ram improvements for $156,000. Since that, we had an archaeological study done in a sensitive area. Because we've got steep funds, we had to send in, work with Sheppo on that, and Sheppo came back with some recommendations to that project. So what we did is we incorporated Sheppo's recommendations, sent that back out for redesign with those recommendations in mind, and we got it back, most recently, the beginning of this month. So unfortunately, with the time lapse, like two years going through that process, adding that, redesigning it, the original cost came back at like $560,000 for an 1,100-foot sidewalk. So that's, that's something that's just really not palatable at that price. So the direction from myself, back to Luke's engineers, and along with the Town's Consulting Engineer, Tom Fenton, we said that's actually just too much. It's a little bit out of line. So they, we worked to get that reduced down with changing some of the drawings and plans that they came up with. So the new number as of this week is 380,000. That's still double, you know, the original cost. The unfortunate part is between the steep grant and the monies we put in the CIP, we can't, we don't see it getting any lower right now with, with the mobilization. It'd have to come back, inflation, and then the extra added costs from the recommendations from Sheppo. We're going to be about $153,000 short. So I would, you don't have to make any decision at this time, but I'll be coming back to the Board of Selectmen and recommending that we go to the ARPA funds to try to fund the shortage in there. What I would like to say is, even though it's at 380,000 now, the next steps would be to send it to DOT District Two, get them to review it, which could take a little bit of time. Hopefully, they get, they're satisfied with what we've designed and sent in. And the smoking gun or the silver lining would be if we could put that out to bid, and hopefully the bids come in cheaper than that. That would be a blessing. But in order to get the ball moving, we needed a review at DOT, so we settled at that 380 price to get it out to bid, and we'll be sending that down. So what I'm really trying to say is, even if this were to get passed, if the Board of Selectmen decides to fund that through the ARPA funds, you probably won't see any construction until spring now, with everything we need to do to satisfy the steep grant and the review from DOT. So that's a big one. That's been a lot of work this week. To Donna's credit, we have a lot of new, a lot of new department heads, so we're kind of spread thin. We're kind of helping with some of these older projects with Mike O'Leary gone. I'm kind of happen to wear two hats and work with the new Town Planner, because he's not really up to speed on some of the stuff, nor what I expect him to be. So the next thing that's in Donna's wheelhouse is, she deserves kudos. She secured, along with the town, 105,000 and a half, $105 million for upgrades to the Stonecroft elderly housing down there. That's huge. We weren't even anticipating getting that kind of money. So working back and forth, Donna's put in a lot of time. That's not one of the most exciting projects to have to deal with, that department and getting this stuff done. A lot of meetings, a lot of paperwork. So kudos to her. That's a lot of money. And with that amount of money, we're going to be able to do everything, pretty much everything down there that was listed, where it didn't look like that was going to happen, but we pulled it off. So she deserves a little credit there, or a lot of credit, I should say. Next, another thing I want to thank the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen for is the new roll-off is here, and it's went right into operation as soon as we got it, and that's been a godset. We're lucky to get, get that. So once again, thanks for the cooperation with the two boards to let us move on that. Due to COVID, we couldn't get anything locally. We, we bought a truck out of Ohio, had to lease it for six months, but it's working out perfectly. So thank you again. Working with the Board of Finance, we did the new rollover for the new fiscal year. That, as of right now, it seemed to go pretty flawlessly, not like in years past, but that software. So keep your fingers crossed. It looks like that went well when the Board of Finance is meeting tonight. So once again, with Mike O'Leary gone and a new Town Planner, I've been working with the Economic Development Commission on the two Brownfields Grants for the two properties, 501 Church Street, and then also the Tursion Mill. There's been some changes in the people that administer those grants at the state, believe it or not. So we're getting acclimated with the new people. We met with them today, and we're dealing with the owners or the prospective owners or contractors that are going to work on those two projects and move that project forward. So that's been taking up a little bit of time as well. As you just heard, we'll be working with the new assessor and the new deputy fire marshal. This week, I also had, or last week, I met with the new Ram Superintendent, Colin. He seems like he's gonna, you know, hit the ground running. I know Mark's working with him over there at the school, so we welcome him. Another thing that's working with the State of Connecticut with, they were trying to purchase a used vehicle for regionalization of an ACO officer with the Town of Columbia. So we drew up a contract that's at the attorney's, Halloran and Sage, both towns use the same firm, waiting for that paperwork back, and then we're trying to go through administrative services at the state to try to pick up a used vehicle we would share. So we're diligently trying to get that nailed down, so Willie can retire out of that position. And we have a new person slated to take that over. And last but not least, I think Danny's aware of this, we're working to get the portable classrooms demolition down at Hebron Elementary School. So I've talked to the contractor. We have the inspection coming to abate the building to make sure there's no asbestos or any other harmful materials that need to be abated. We don't think so, but we're still going to have that process and have that move forward. That's going to take place next week. Then hopefully, we get a clean bill by August 5th, and either the end of that week or the beginning of next week, we're going to start the demolition of those, those facilities out there to remove those before the start of school. So it feels like I'm back in the contractor business, but that's what we've been up to in the Town Manager's office. I don't know if there's any questions.
No.
I think under correspondence, as Mr. Tullamary had, had announced, he had sent in a letter that was submitted to all the Board of Selectmen, so everybody's read it and received it, and that will be entered into the record, along with the other correspondence that are here. You can see, I thank the other fire departments for helping us, the mutual aid assistance at the fire at Ted's Plaza. We have the State Police report for incidents for the month. And then we receive additional monies for the North Central Tripway Grants for transportation and exercise classes down at the Senior Center. So that's, that's a good, good news letter. And that's all I have.
As I say, your office is never not busy. Okay. Next thing would be the ARPA funds. And.
Yeah, it looks like we're starting, but.
No, no, go ahead, please.
Okay, moving this meeting along, revised, I don't know if everybody has it, but this is a revised item A that went out in the original packet. We revised that, so if you need that up on the screen, Donna can do that, but I'll read it. Bear with me. American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds Approval. Attached is the list of the ARPA projects identified for funding. A second public hearing was conducted on June 28th, 2022, with attendees generally supportive of the proposed projects, and some suggestions for new ideas presented. There have been, they have been added to the list. The Town Attorney has ruled on eligibility for all projects presented to him for review. At this time, it is appropriate for the Board to give final approval on the round-one projects to a lot of Town Managers to facilitate acquisition and implementation of the identified projects. The Selectmen should review the list or the listing and make necessary adjustments. The Town Manager's Office will conduct, I'm sorry, will continue to refine the items and budget for round-two projects, and will bring back to the Board of Selectmen at a future date. Additional public hearings may be held if necessary. The second, to say, ARPA funding was not yet, or has not yet been received by the Town of Hebron, but is expected soon. And then after that, there's some proposed, there's a proposed resolution that should be read by one of the Selectmen and then voted on. But we've been going through this for quite a while. We want to get started on some, some of those projects that were identified and kind of blessed. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll read the resolution, open it up for comments, discussion, and then hopefully we will move this forward. So the resolution, be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the round-one ARPA projects as listed on the ARPA list dated July 18th, 2022, and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to take any action necessary to acquire or implement the identified projects. Be it further resolved that it is understood the amounts indicated on the ARPA list are budget estimates. The amount of the final project may be more or less than indicated, and that the Town Manager has the discretion to adjust the amount. If an individual project budget comes in more than 20% above the original budget amount, an update will be provided to the Board of Selectmen before commitment is made and project is finalized. Be it further resolved that authorization given to Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, by the resolution includes the signing of any purchase agreements, contracts, or any. Uh of any purchase agreements, contracts, or any other documents necessary to actuate the finalization of the projects. So open it up for a discussion. Gail or Mark?
No, that final list is fine by me. I went over it carefully.
Okay, uh Mark?
Fine by me too, Dan.
And I talked to Tiffany on it and I know she's uh wants to see this go forward. And I'm assuming uh Peter was also indicating the same and I vote yes also. Uh so all in favor signify by saying yes. Uh Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, thank you. Any other old business? Hearing none, moving into our new business and we have uh two grad applications. Um Andy?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Item nine A is approved the Leary Firefighters Foundation Grant Application. And then it's listed here, attaches information for a grant application opportunity through the Leary Firefighters Foundation. The fire department would like to submit an application for the purchase. Of secure climate controlled AED Automatic External Defibrillators cabinets and AEDs to be installed throughout town. No match is required. Then there's a proposed motion, but we also have the fire chief and I think some other. Fire membership here if there's questions to be had.
Okay, uh anyone have any questions of the chief or other membership? I do know, actually, well, you know what? I'll ask a question. Um. Okay. Explain, uh uh chief, if you could explain what an AED is and explain roughly how many we have throughout town now.
Sure. So an AED is an Automatic External Defibrillator, uh D-Fib unit. So we have a number throughout the town. We have a number of businesses that actually currently have them. Um a a number of years ago, along before I got here, the department started working on making Hebron a heart safe community. In order to be a heart safe community, you have to have so many folks in town, uh not just us, but but uh folks in town, residents trained in CPR. And you have to have a a certain number of of AED units throughout your community. Uh which we've been very aggressive in doing. Uh we've been trying to purchase one every year. Um replacing one of our older units and then essentially gifting uh the older one to a business. So um this grant uh would actually allow us to buy these uh. Secure climate controlled boxes that we could put throughout town and place AEDs in um out in public areas. So if there was a uh an incident uh where someone went into cardiac arrest. Um and there was one of these close, individual would call nine one one, the dispatcher would then basically. Send a code to the box and unlock it and then the AED could be retrieved from the unit. So uh pretty, pretty cool concept. Um you know, our goal would be, this would actually be like a multi-year grant and project. Um so that we can get some out in the public in in areas where we really need them, you know, maybe a couple on Main Street, uh Burnhill Park, you know, out in. Out in the field areas where they can be easily accessed. So uh pretty, pretty cool stuff.
Thank you. Okay, the motion, um move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approved submission of a grant application to the Leary Firefighters Foundation. For the purchase of secure climate controlled AED Automatic External Defibrillator cabinets and AEDs. To be installed throughout town and authorize Andrew J. Tierney Town Manager to sign any necessary documents to apply for, accept. And receive such grant. Uh hearing the motion, any discussion?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment, Dan.
Sure.
So i- i- in keeping with this, the whole police department was just trained by uh Hebron, Hebron EMS staff. And AED and CPR. So we're, we're be, we're participants in this. And as uh the chief was saying, we're, we're trying to meet goals where uh as a community, we can respond to these emergencies. And one last comment, for for those of you who aren't aware of how important our fire department is. Um we could have lost the whole Ted's Plaza. We had two firefighters there within four minutes with water on the fire. Without that, there would have been millions of dollars of damage. And uh the chief himself wasn't even working that day and his own personal car showed up. And um any opportunity I have to uh to shed positive light on the fire department and what they do. I take it. So this is my opportunity to take it and uh thank you guys for being the unsung heroes you are and. And uh really, that that's, that's an incredible feat what what you pulled off. Um so thanks, chief, and thank you guys for us.
No, thank you. Um I I'm very proud of of the efforts of our, our, of our folks and the mutual aid companies that showed up and it was a hot day and. Not an easy fire and um I'm, I I was just elated at 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 the response that we got and 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 the hard work that everybody put in. We've been training a lot and working a lot and and um. You know, this has been on our radar and and um and and we were ready and and again, we're, we're, we're very proud of that. So thank you very much. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, hearing the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Uh Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, our next one. Andy?
Item nine B, thank you, Mr. Chairman, approved deep volunteer fire assistance grant application. Attached is information for a grant application opportunity through the state of Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection Volunteer Fighter Assistance Grant Program. The fire department would like to submit an application for the purchase of firefighter nozzles and appliances. The town's match will come from already budgeted funds and then below would be a proposed motion. And once again, the fire chief is here for any questions.
Okay, and I will ask the question, what are nozzles and appliances?
So nozzles, firefighting nozzles. So uh this past year, uh we were lucky enough to to purchase some, some new fire hose. And uh this year, our plan was to update some of our nozzles. So nozzles are how we get water onto the fire. In addition to some other appliances, there's some, some foam appliances that that we don't have that we need. That would work with these nozzles to apply um environmentally friendly foam. So we, again, we had budgeted for it and we had planned on purchasing them this year. But this uh deep grant uh would basically um would cover half that that cost. Because the nozzles and appliances were just a little, little shy of five thousand dollars. So. Uh this would be a great use of the funds and and like I said, it would offset the cost by about fifty percent.
Okay, any other questions? Actually, let me read the motion. Uh move the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve submission of a grant application. The state of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Volunteer Fire Assistance Grant Program. In the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for the purchase of firefighting nozzles and appliances. Uh and authorize Andrew J. Tierney Town Manager to sign any necessary documents to apply for, accept and receive such grant. So hearing the motion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Uh Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Uh Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Okay, perfect. Thank you. And thank you, chief.
Yep, so actually the 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 deadline on this one for submission is is by August first. So I'm going to have this uh completed uh this weekend and I'll have it. To you beginning of the week, Andy, and we can review it and and get it going. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, uh Andy?
Item nine C, Mr. Chairman, this would be authorization for phase two branding and marketing study. Attached is a memo from the town planner, Matthew Bordeaux, requesting the Board of Selectmen authorize or authorization for phase two of the branding and marketing study. Phase two funding was approved in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget. So in a nutshell, what this is, this was already approved, but because it spanned in two fiscal years. It it needs to be reapproved by the Board of Selectmen. You'd already approved this once, but. It was a two-year process, so the funding had to go through the budget. So. I would hope you would uh honor something you've kind of already given a blessing to. Just, we just want to follow the. The budgeting procedures and make sure we don't um, you know, carry over from year to year. So this would be a formality of something that we've already entered into.
Okay, I'll read the motion, open it up for discussion, then go forward. Uh the motion, move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen award phase two of the branding and marketing study project. To FHI Studios of Hartford, Connecticut in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Uh discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Uh Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Okay. Our next section, our next thing. Would be.
I have.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'm at, I I'm at item nine D, I believe. And that is approve agreement with the Info Quick Solutions for Records Management System and Services. This uh. Uh the town clerk's office is in the process of transitioning to a new records management system. The town manager is recommending a bid waiver be approved by the Board of Selectmen and award the contract to Info Quick Solutions, Inc. Attached is a draft agreement and other backup for the request. The final agreement will be presented before or at the meeting. So. In a nutshell, again, um we solicited prices for the companies that deal with Connecticut. And out of the prices we solicited, the one that we're recommending was the best and they're also the lowest quote. But because of the amount of money in the purchasing policy, I feel it's in the town's best interest to award it to the one. That gave us the lowest quote. We didn't go out to bid because a lot of the other ones don't service uh town clerks or town, towns in Connecticut. So therefore, uh the request from the town clerk's office to me was uh looking to go with this firm that has a good record with uh many towns within. The state of Connecticut. So that's why we're here in front of you with this request tonight.
Okay. I'll read the motion, we'll open it up for discussion and go from there. Uh the motion, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a bid waiver in accordance with uh Town of Hebron Purchasing Policy. Waiver of competitive bid process and award the contract for records, management system and services. To Info Quick Solutions Incorporated of New York and authorize Andrew J. Tierney Town Manager. To sign the agreement for Hebron Town Clerk's Records Management System and Services. Any discussion?
This is a needed thing. I think we should just approve it and let it go forward. Um these modern record systems are essential to keep. Offices running and town clerk's office definitely has a lot of records they need to compile and keep track of.
Yeah, uh Mark?
Andy, did, did we have somebody who was doing this before or is this something uh that's a new addition to the process?
No, I think we were definitely doing this before with another company. I don't know if that's listed in the informational packet. But we're looking to change. Uh this company is a lot easier and um friendlier to work with. Not so much friendlier, but you know, uh compatible with what they want to do. And uh so they're, they're looking for a change.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'm assuming similar to some of the fire equipment vendors, there's just not a lot of options. So I'm, I'm willing to accept this. Uh so hearing the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Our next section would be the uh year-end transfers. Andy?
Yes, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. We do this every year. Uh so this is under approved the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two year-end transfers. Attached is a summary of the year-end intra department and inter department transfers. There's a proposed motion there. And then the backup are the actual uh information and transfers.
Okay, I'll read the motion and then I don't know if Elaine just wants to just touch base over any of this or not. Uh the motion, move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the intra department transfers. For the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-eight cents as presented. I guess we'll do this in two motions?
Yeah.
Okay. Um and I see Elaine on, so did you just want to briefly recap? Uh that portion of it?
Getting my notes out from my Board of Finance meeting, so I can just give you an update on the. Fiscal year and process and where we ended up. So with the expense budget that was amended with supplemental appropriations and the amount of thirty-seven million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh we ended the year with about a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars surplus. This was primarily due to underspent, it says one seventy-three on the screen, but we had a small batch today of payments. That had to be done for the town clerk's office. That cannot be done until July, once they have finished a lot of their revenue collections and payments have to be remitted. To the state for their portion. So that number is down a hundred and seventy-three to about a hundred and seventy-six, uh a hundred and sixty-three thousand, sorry. Um the surplus was primarily due to underspent part-time payroll lines within departments two thousand and one, the police. And the senior center thirty thirteen and thirty twenty. And DPW full-time payroll line, and these were mostly due to attrition and changing in personnel. Uh the state trooper services was also much lower than what I estimated due to. Our new trooper at a lower rate of pay from our outgoing trooper. And the ACO Connolly case where we're holding a bunch of animals in various. Uh animal control pounds across the state. The state had informed us that the town of Hebron, we're responsible, I think Andy probably touched base with this months ago for you. But the animals are housed at all different pounds around the state in different municipalities, but Hebron is responsible for remitting. Payments for the care of these animals. And then the state reimburses us. I had been told by the state that we would not receive any of our reimbursements until the current fiscal year, twenty twenty-three. But in late June, we received thirty-seven thousand dollars from the state. For March and April's cost and I put that back in the expense line. So that's the result of the expense surplus. Um the revenue budget in the amount of thirty-six four oh four was completed with about a nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars surplus. Primarily due to more back tax collection than we budgeted. Unbudgeting of the ECS funding in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two thousand and additional conveyance fees from the town clerk's office in the amount of a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Real estate is at a much higher value than in years past, and this is the result. Of the increased values in sale and fees collected in the clerk's office, but I am told by the. Um town clerk and assistant town clerk that they do not expect this to continue. So that's where the budget ended up. And as to the transfers. Um we had a lot of lines that were overdrawn. Within the budgets, but overall, overall, the bottom line had a surplus. So. You have your inter department where the line accounts. The line accounts on the left-hand side are the ones that are overdrawn and the accounts on the right-hand are where the funding will come from to cover the overdrafts. And then the intra or overdrafts that can be done within departments. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
If I have any questions?
No.
Okay. So, uh, motion number one. Uh, moving that the report is selected and approve the. Intra department transfers for. Uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, fifty-eight cents as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh, Gail?
Yeah, which my aye.
Uh, Mark?
You explained that well. Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. And then motion number two, move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the inter department transfers. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand. Nine hundred and eighty-two. Dollars and twenty-one cents as presented. Again, anyone have any questions for Elaine? She kind of explained both. Portions of that. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh, Gail?
Gail, which my aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you very much, Elaine.
Thank you all.
Uh. Our next. Will be our draft agenda. And now this would be where actually. Probably should discuss whether or not to cancel the um. Uh, yes, August fourth meeting, and that would then allow us to have the uh next meeting would be August eighteenth. Um, so what's the flavor of everybody? Well, first off, Andy, if we discuss the um. Special. Appropriation. Is there anything else that we have that may need to come up? Or our other option would be to what? Do a special meeting?
Yeah, so at this time, Mister Chairman, when we get to that agenda, the Board of Finances are set in August eleventh. Special meeting to deal with that. So the Board of Selectmen. Won't affect us. Um. I'm gonna, we're gonna go through it tonight. You're gonna authorize me to to send that over to them with comments, and if any selectman has comments on that request, once we read it. You could just send that over to the Board of Finance Chairperson. So as of, as of right now, unless Donna knows something I don't, I don't think there's anything time-sensitive. That we would have to do a special timing, or we should not cancel the August fourth, if that's the flavor of the board.
Okay. Uh. Gail or Mark?
I think it's a.
I I I do too. Yeah, I'm think, I'm in favor of canceling the meeting.
Okay, uh, Gail?
Yes, as I said, I think, I think it's a good, good thing to cancel the meeting. Um. We, anything that needs to be handled can be handled tonight or at the August eighteenth one, unless something comes along. And we have to have a special meeting.
And of course, that's our other option is that we can have. Uh, there are uh procedures that if we do need to have a special meeting. Because something unexpected comes up that needs to be addressed prior to the uh. August eighteenth meeting, uh, a special meeting can be called as long as it's, it's recorded in a timely fashion. Uh, so with that, I I guess then uh the flavor is to cancel the August fourth meeting. Um, all in favor of doing that? Uh, Gail?
Deal with my aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And I'll go with it, myself, aye. Okay, so with that happening. Um. The things on the August fourth agenda will be moved to the August eighteenth. Agenda, and then we have a request. Uh. That we need to forward to the uh Board of Finance, and I'll let Andy discuss that.
Yeah, I'm gonna put Donna on the spot if I can, hopefully she will work with me here tonight. Donna, do you feel like reading that uh that letter? No reason I want to read it aloud is because you're gonna, we're gonna act on it tonight.
Sure, I will. Let me just. Follow it up here.
Or a clean copy.
Okay. This is addressed, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. It's um dated July eighteenth, and it's addressed to Andrew Tierney, uh, Town Manager. Dear Mister Tierney pursuant to, hang on one second, I just need to minimize something here, okay? Pursuant to Town Charter, section nine oh five supplemental appropriations. Board of Education is requesting a supplemental appropriation in the amount of five, uh, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, three seventy-two. The purpose of this funding would be to accommodate our growing enrollment in preschool. As you know, our kindergarten through grade six enrollment has grown by ten percent over the past two years. The needs of our community for high-quality preschool education is also growing. We currently have twenty students on our waiting list for preschool openings. It is our strong collective opinion that the town has a responsibility to serve this need. Our preschool program is extremely popular in the community due to the high quality of programming that our dedicated certified. Educators provide. Preschool is an investment in the future of our students and our community. Benefits of a high-quality preschool experience are that. It provides fundamental learning and supports student transition to kindergarten. Offers increased opportunities for socialization, emphasizes social, emotional learning and growth of self-regulation skills. Provides early intervention and support to students experiencing academic and developmental challenges. Increases gains on achievement test scores, decreases occurrences of grade retention and identification for specialized services. Increases high school graduation rates, decreases crime and delinquency rates. Allows children who missed out on a year of quality preschool due to COVID, including academic, behavioral and social experience. A successful start to school. And hang on a sec. We ask the Board of Finance members to think of the families who are anxiously awaiting word on their response to this request. As they seek to secure a preschool education for their children. We respectfully request that this be placed on the next Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance meeting agendas. And swiftly approved. We are seeking supplemental appropriations for this need. As our non-lapsing account would not cover the full cost of this request. Further, the funds in our non-lapsing account are now earmarked to cover our additional special education costs. Not known at the time of our original twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. School year budget was developed and to cover needed additional staff to serve our. Ten percent growth in enrollment that was reduced by the Board of Finance by a quarter of a million dollars. In the spirit of our continued supportive collaboration and desire to ensure equitable access. To educational programming for all of Hebron's children that we write you with this request. We were heartened to learn that the Board of Finance approved three separate supplemental appropriations for the town last year. We are confident that they will grant this request as it will mean many more families who currently. Do not have a secure preschool program in place for their children will be able to access our high-quality program. Thank you for considering our important request. Families are eagerly awaiting Board of Finance action. In collaboration and it's signed by the Board of Education, Heather Pettit Chair. Amanda Veneziano Vice Chair, Allison Smysel Secretary, Alexander Crawford, Joseph Margitis, Nicole Matthews. And Diane Morales. That's it.
Thank you. Um. I'll open it up to the board for discussion. Uh, as I say, this would be something that, and Andy corrected me if I'm wrong. This will be going to the Board of Finance, but uh we would be sending it to them. With our uh comments. Is that accurate?
If you. Yeah, if you want, I'll just so everybody knows in a way, I'll read what the charter says regarding the supplemental appropriations, and then we can all have a discussion. So it's under section nine. It, it's under section nine oh five of the Town of Hebron's Charter. Uh, regarding uh supplement appropriations. Under item A, duties of the Board of Selectmen in the event that a department or town agency shall require a supplemental appropriation. Such requests shall be made in writing to the Town Manager. The Town Manager shall forward with any comments or recommendations that he might have. Said request to the Board of Selectmen. The Selectmen shall examine the request and shall accept for, except for requests from the local Board of Education. Have the power to approve or deny the request. If the Board of Selectmen shall approve the request, it shall submit said request to the Board of Finance with its recommendations. Any request from the local Board of Education shall be forwarded forthwith to the Board of Finance. Except that the Board of Selectmen may comment on the request. So what that is, is I received the letter. I forwarded it. It was also addressed to the Chairman of the Board of Finance, so she got a copy of that. Uh, Elaine forwarded it to the whole Board of Finance Committee. Um, I took it upon myself. To send it to the Town Attorney for review and comments to make sure we comply with the charter. Um, at this point in time, now that we're into the fiscal year, it's clearly not. Illegal uh for to make a request, but there's still some, uh, you know, uh, guidelines for supplemental appropriations. So due to the timing, as a town manager, I'm gonna write some comments to the Board of Selectmen. And they'll be forwarded along with your comments to the Board of Finance. So just in in a nutshell, without, you know, the Board of, the Board of Education has a very tough job, and it's very. You know, admirable what they're trying to do, and I totally understand why they're trying to do that. The problem with the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance with this is we're only a couple. Weeks into the new fiscal years. You just made the transfers tonight. Um, we're really barely getting into the approved budget. Uh, and the democracy in the Town of Hebron with the charter is a referendum. So in order to make a quarter million dollar. Supplemental appropriation this early in the game. Might be perceived as circumventing the, the, the budgeting process. I'm not trying to point any fingers or say they have any less lesser. Hercules tasks that they're trying to accomplish. It's just. We, we gotta tread lightly. I think we could have possibly maybe had conversations prior to a formal letter to see what we could have done. Uh, but here we are today with the formal letter, and that's okay. Um, but I'm not sure how that's gonna be perceived. I, I would have hoped they'd seen maybe this coming a little bit sooner than. Than now. I do understand their urgency. If, if it's preschool and they want to get them started before the season. That's another reason they're in front of us today, but it's gonna be a tough, uh, it's gonna be a tough call.
Uh, Gail, would you like to go first, or can I comment?
Go ahead. I'm listening to your mark.
Okay, Gail. I, I, I find this a little ironic. That they're asking for the exact amount or close to that they were cut. And. They didn't see this coming before that they were gonna have the shortage. We just went through this whole budget process. We, we deliberated on this. We discussed it with the Board of Finance. We waited. We waited in terms of being equitable to all groups in Hebron. Um. We don't want to shortchange senior citizens. We don't want to change uh public safety, the fire department, RAM. So no one else is asking for an appropriation. Um, I feel that appropriations should be something of an emergency nature. Um, this doesn't appear to be of an emergency nature, not that anybody wants to deny uh. Uh, care to, to young people, but I see this as um something that. Should have been taken care of. Everybody has a budget. If it's that important to you, find some other way to fund it. Um, I'm not in favor of doing this.
Gail?
I won't use the word I'm not in favor, but I could, I can't be in favor of this. You always know how many. One, two, and three-year-olds you have in your district. So with that knowledge, those numbers, they should have been able to plan. A budget that included preschool for those other kids. Um. And the fact that uh. We haven't, it's not what we're supposed to do, approve supplemental before we even get into the year. Um, so. Why didn't they, why weren't those numbers done? I do know, having been working with special ed, that sometimes. You could have. Kids move in that have an I E P that requires a great deal of other expenditures, but um. Can you find that in your budget? That's my comments.
Uh, my comments. Supplemental appropriations. Historically are for when you have done everything. It financially utilizing, you know, prudence, you know, financial prudence. Uh, and yet you have still gone over in costs because of things outside of your control. Um, the money that was, was cut from the budget. They were talking originally was because of, I want to say, third and fourth grade. Uh, student additions. But now all of a sudden, it's preschool. Um. When preschool first started, and this is under um. I can't think of her name. It was supposed to be a, a program that wasn't gonna cost the town anything. Uh, and now all of a sudden, it's costing us money, and we have daycare centers that um. You know, are gonna suffer. I, I, I just think it's premature at this juncture of time. To be looking for supplemental. I, 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 I just do. Um. You know, the Board of Finance is the entity that's gonna have to take a look at, at their numbers to see if it's reasonable or logical, but. Um. You know, as I say, supplementals were when you have done everything possible, and yet expenses have just gotten out of hand. Um. That's even when I was fire chief. You know, we had expenses that went over, and I did everything in my power to get it from within my budget. To, to cover the expenses. Um. It's kind of my, my take on it. Yes, Andy?
Yeah, so that last statement is probably the one that should ring through the response is. The, the definition of, like I said, it's not illegal to request this early on, but the definition or the actual understanding for supplemental appropriation. Is just that. I mean, you try to, if it's an unforeseen that, that puts you, you know, in dire straits, and you've, you've exhausted other avenues within your budget. Um, it'd be an easier approval process. Um, as, as much of a good job they're trying to do, and it's admirable what they're trying to do. This isn't mandated. And, and as you stated, there's other entities that. Pay their taxes by providing the service. Um, not trying to pile it onto the board of it. They got a tough job to do. They want what's best for the kids in the community, and I totally understand that. We all want to work with them to do that. Uh, this is just point of reference. That for the first year, the non-lapsing account, they're gonna have two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, there that they can use as well. So I'm not, not trying to pile it on. I just think this conversation warrants your, that information to you people while you're making your decisions.
Uh, I think, I, I think we've all. Made statements that, that could be uh. Forwarded along with their request. For the Board of Finance to ponder and, and make their final decision at this time.
A- as I stated, Mister Chairman, I believe they scheduled a special. Meeting to deal with this within the time constraints. In the charter says it has to be dealt with. Uh, within thirty days, so I think it's August eleventh that they're gonna have that special uh Board of Finance meeting.
Okay.
Correct.
I was going to say, opening this up a little bit more, Elaine, did you have anything else concerning special appropriations? What, what the process has been historically or no?
I pretty much just did what Andy's explanation was. In the past, normally supplemental appropriations have been for unbudgeted items or unexpected expenses that have come up such as, you know, the senior van, we needed matching dollars that we didn't know about or, you know, trucks that have had issues down a DPW, a cruiser where the rear end fell out. I mean, those are unforeseen, unexpected expenses where supplemental appropriations have been granted. So pretty much Andy covered it with what he had to say. And Board of Finance meeting is, special meeting is August 11th.
Okay, yeah, so, so again, we do have, we do have instances that we can go back on showing the, the, the needs of, of previous special appropriations or supplemental appropriations and, and the history of why they were requested and, and you know, why. So I, I think at this time, it's just a little premature. And I'm not sure if they're trying to expand an already, or expand a program which should have been discussed back during the budget process. It's kind of sort of my thought. Is that enough for you to act on, Andy, or?
Yeah, like I said, per the Charter, we're just going to send a letter with the, we'll take the comments from the, the meeting minutes that were, Don and I will formalize the letter and I'll send it on your behalf. I'll send it to the Board of Selectment prior to sending it before they, the packet goes out for that August 11th meeting, but it'll, it'll pretty much be what the Town Attorney's statements are going to be. That it's not illegal, but he may caution us on, you know, the actual definition of supplemental appropriations. And then the, the, we'll summarize the comments here today. Hopefully they understand we're not trying to prevent them from doing the good work that they do, but you know, we also have to think of the, the taxpayers in Hebron and we just went through a referendum and we're not trying to point the finger that they didn't do their work and have it in the budget, but it will be perceived. It's a lot of money to, to come back for a supplemental appropriation three weeks into the fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other new business? Okay, hearing none. We have our consent agenda. And these are items that are considered routine in nature, which the Board may or may not need to discuss individually and maybe voted on as a group. I want to separate it so that we have the approval of the June 18th, or any of my glasses? The June 16th regular meeting. I just want to, because we, I was not at the other meetings, want to break that out. We'll do that separately. And I'm trying to find. Okay. So does anybody have any corrections to the June 16th regular meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go. This is kind of, I'm on a, under corrections. I have a correction.
Okay.
Under the corrections, it was about the Douglas Library and, excuse me, the Commission on Aging. Two people expressed an interest and their names are Angela Correntin. It was not, it was written in as Curtain. It's Correntin, C O R E N T I N. And the other one is Carol Wheeler. The minutes also say that to omit Catherine McSweeney, which is incorrect. She was a candidate, but she withdrew before the meeting. When I went down to May 12th to the public hearing, it does not say that a motion was made by Dee Larson to approve the minutes as presented and they were approved unanimously. Dan, down at the bottom of that page, the June 2nd regular meeting, moved to approve the June 2nd regular minutes. The budget, the motion passed and it says with all in favor. That's incorrect. It was, the motion passed three, zero, two. Two abstentions, myself and Mark. I think I found all my errors.
Okay. The only one I had, it was under the LGBTQ proclamation. I would just like it clarified that Daniel Larson initiated the discussion about the inclusive, inclusivity as he felt that this proclamation was in fact not inclusive as written. You know, it just really very quickly brushed over that whole discussion. And I just want that in as a clarification. You know, yes, we did all vote in favor of it, but I want it noted that I don't believe that that is written. It, it was conclusive. With those changes, a motion to approve the June 16th, 2022 regular meeting. Gail?
Yeah, Richmond, I.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, I.
And myself, I. Procedural question. Mark, you were the only one, you were the only one, I think, that was at the ARPA public hearing?
I might have been the only one that wasn't there.
Well, I wasn't there because I had the, the hospital bit.
I was not there either.
Andy, I wasn't there, or I was, or was I the only one at that one, Andy? I missed one and I think I was the only one at one of them. You recall?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
In the in-person public hearing at the library, Tiffany and Peter were the Selectment that weren't attendance.
Yeah, I was at a Zoom one where I think it was just you and I, Dan, on some meeting prior to that.
You know, right now, we only have the June 28th, 2022 ARPA public hearing. My question is, can we vote on it since none of us were there?
Good point.
Yeah.
You can, you can vote on it. You just abstain and it doesn't pass, but you can call the question. But, or you can postpone it to the next, next.
Well, it still changed that we weren't there, so.
That's my point.
That's why I'm tending to feel that that needs to get brought up at the June or the August 18th meeting since none of us were at that meeting to approve what, what was done.
Okay, you can, you can, you know, you know, propose it to be brought up again at that meeting.
But, but don't, don't we already have enough knowledge and understanding? And that we had already expressed what we supported, what we didn't. And we pretty much expressed that we supported everything that came out of that. So does it really matter that we were there or not because we already supported it?
Well, this vote would be to approve the minutes of that meeting, so.
Oh, just the minutes part, okay.
Yeah, right, right, right. And that's what I'm saying. None of us were there.
Okay.
Procedurally, i- i- if we can, I, I need somebody smarter than I. I know that's not hard.
Let's abstain for now then.
Okay. Gail?
I, this is Donna. I, I would just, we could defer it to the next meeting and then with Tiffany and Peter there, you, you will be able to approve it. You're not required to abstain. You know, you can vote, but with, with them there, I think you'll be able to pass the minutes.
Thank you. Okay, so I, you know, so we'll push that off to the August 18th. And then the tax refunds, make a motion to approve the tax refunds as listed. Gail?
Gail Richmond, I.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, I.
And myself, I. Thank you. Okay, with that, we get into our liaison reports, liaison, liaison. Andy, we'll start with him.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So it's getting quite lengthy with the WPCA now that we're getting the products in, the generators in. So I've been sending those out to you via email. There was a pretty lengthy update from Thurland Montgomery from White Pierce. We're, we're in full swing. They're installing the concrete chambers or cutting the old ones out, removing them, especially down by Old Railroad. You can see quite a work going on there, excavators, a lot of trucks. So we've got the product we've been patiently waiting for, so that job is back full swing and hopefully looking the wrap most of it up by the end of December. The only thing that is still outstanding, as you well know, is ever source only approves or sole sources two or three meters. And we can't get them. The earliest arrival date for those is March or April. So, but everything else is moving forward finally, so let's keep our fingers crossed that they can get 90% of that wrapped up with what they need to do by the end of December.
Hey, great. Thank you. Gail?
Okay, I have a few things. For the Board of Ed, they haven't been meeting all summer and what, and we already went over their requests for a supplemental appropriation. So on the Douglas Library, Douglas Library is extremely busy this summer. They have a summer reading program. Tomorrow, they're going to be showing the movie, The Secrets of Dumbledore at, at one o'clock. Tuesday night at six thirty, six thirty, they're going to be a program called The Connecticut Wineries with the Nutmeg Nose. And there are over 40 wineries in Connecticut, so this program will be telling you all about them. The library now has, as a gift from the Friends of the Library, a lawn game collection, which you can go up to the library and take out for one week. It includes yard darts, bocce and many more. That's it about the library. The Senior Center, as you heard, has been awarded money. That, those funds come, are in three different categories. And so it's $67,712, which is $13,710 more than last year. They are also taking rent to rebates apps right until August 1st, I mean, October 1st. And the Connecticut Water Assistance Program and the Water Rate Assistance Program, those apps are also being taken. So if anyone's interested and thinks they qualify for those programs, they should call the Senior Center. That's it, Dan.
Thank you. Mark?
Few comments about RAM. So I, I said goodbye to Scott Leslie and that was pretty sad for me. He retired, but he already has a new job, working for an educational firm to educate young people in, in refugee camps. So it didn't take very long to get a job and get involved in doing something that's pretty commendable. So before Scott left, for years, we had been working very hard on an active shooter response and COVID put us way off track, guys. So now that things are kind of back in order, I met with the new superintendent and we're working to get that going. I've been working for two years to get my federal certification as an active shooter coordinator and responder. I'm already an active shooter instructor. I met with the Chief, Chief Starkell, because it's a three-pronged approach. It's EMS, it's police and it's the school. And right now, we're not prepared and I'm sure it's still pretty fresh in everybody's mind, what happened in Uvalde. We studied that at the school I just went to. And it kind of scares me a little bit to, to know that that we, we're not prepared. And we're going to work hard. I discussed this with Andy today too, that, that we need to act as quickly as possible. Chief Starkell's on board, Andy's on board and we're going to get going forward with this, guys. And I've been getting more calls than I've ever gotten about concerned people about how we're going to respond, what we're doing and to make these kids safe. So I just, I just wanted to get out there, guys, and I, you know, we hope we have all your support and going forward with this endeavor.
Okay, beautiful. The only thing I have, Hebron Historic Properties. Matt came over the other day, saw the inside of, of the Peters' house. Saw the great amount of pro- progress that's been made on it. Actually have a CO for the first floor. Never realized that that had never been done before. So when the Juneteenth Committee was going to go in and I found out that, in fact, there'd never been a CO for that first floor. It was like, yeah, so that's been done. So things are really moving along over there. I invite people to stop in and see what all the effort has been. Take a look at that. I think, I think that's about it. Fire Department hasn't met and is there anything on, on, I know you did the WPCA, is there anything on? Yeah. Eastern, or water pollution, the Health Department, that's what I'm thinking.
No, the Health, well, no, the Health Department continues to do what they're supposed to do. They're back doing, you know, restaurant inspections. And because we're back doing that, they've, COVID's kind of put a little bit of the brakes on that for a little bit. But now that we're back to finding some issues in some of the restaurants, so we're hoping to get those corrected for everybody's benefit and that's throughout the district, but there is a couple of areas in town that are being educated.
Okay. Beautiful. Well, then our next, next section would be our public comment section again. Donna, is there anybody for public comment?
Here is Mel Lecter would like to make a public comment.
Okay, great. And good day, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to see that Chief Starkell is still, still with us tonight. I just wanted to make a brief comment. We were away on vacation last week when my wife got a notification on her cell phone about this, trying to avoid the center of of Hebron because of the, the fire Ted's. First of all, I mean, it, it's incredible. Like Mark has already stated about the, the fact that the, the whole plaza could have burned. But it, it's unbelievable what the firefighters in Hebron, with the, the leadership of the fire department as well as all the supporting departments, mutual aid departments and the departments from other towns that came to back up those groups as they came to Hebron. A pure, pure example of how great everything works when you're, when you're, you're together and what a, what a great place Hebron is and how we support each other. Our, our feelings go out to the, to the business owners, not only Ted's, but all of the tenants of that complex. We understand that it's going to be a long outage and, and I'd encourage that anything that the town can do to help support those businesses to help get the restoration of the the facility just sped along as quickly as possible, that we do reach out to do that and you know, try to get everybody back together. Uh, you know, try to get everybody back together. Ted's. I can't believe their response uh in terms of, they were worried about the. The firefighters, obviously appreciative, but rather than dwell on their issues. Uh, they would just reach out across the community and they will be at the uh. HM Golf Tournament doing their regular thing, providing food tomorrow. So uh, it's just, it makes us very proud to be in in Hebron and uh. Chief, you guys never cease to amaze me. Thanks for all you guys do.
Thank you, Mal. We we really appreciate that. Um, we we really do, and that 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 means a lot to us, you know. Um. A lot of times we don't, we don't get thank yous and and when we do, it uh, it it really means a lot uh to us. So I I really appreciate that and and and. You know, our job's not over yet. Um, so the the package store owner was my sixth grade teacher, so he's um. He's a pretty, he's a pretty special guy and um. You know, I I've been checking in on him periodically, stopping in just to see. So our, our job's not done yet, you know, we we want to see. Uh, that business or all the businesses back up and running and um. You know, uh, when the last business opens back up, then then the call will be complete. So, thank you again. I really appreciate it.
And uh, Board of Selectmen and and everyone, uh, thank you for the opportunity to to speak.
Not a problem at all. Thank you. Yeah, it's going to be, you know, it. A lot of infrastructure damage due to the heat. That it's going to be a long time before everything is is back up and running there. So it's just sad. It's sad for all those business owners. Uh. It's it's going to be a tough, tough road. So. Part of probably did do an incredible stop. Um, could have been far worse, but. It's still, it's just sad. Yeah, anybody's ever had to live through a fire or the aftermath of it, it's it's just. Amazing how your whole life gets turned upside down in an instant. Okay, uh, anybody else? Hearing none?
That looks like it for now.
Okay, perfect. Uh, thank you. Have a great week. Stay as cool as you can. And uh, we will see you again next month.
And I think it's time for me to make a motion to adjourn.
Yes, it is.
It's it's a 33. Well, adjourn.
Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Good night, everyone.